Welcome to the 228th meeting of the Audit Committee, Tuesday, December the 3rd, 2024. Can I get a roll call by the chair, please?
Yes, the record will reflect that trustees Wilson, Watson, and Wabi are present in the room, and trustees Nick Azison and Kistner are present online.
May I get a motion approval of committee meeting minutes, November 5th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
There are no comments by the chair. Ty, good morning. Can you give us the presentation for the internal audit report, please?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Watson. So if you guys will go ahead and grab this presentation, we usually have to go over the As we do with all these I've two reports, we'll try to find the right balance between giving you enough technical information to so you have some basic understanding, but without being too technical, without making it confusing. Now, if anything does not make sense, please speak up and ask questions, definitely, and we'll try to answer those. Bill Goldil here with me, he runs the engagements, so anything technical on program, defer to him. Also under, I mentioned that we did, some of the eyes removed or omitted, in some cases, system names or system specifics, we won't avoid giving any potential bad actors too much information in the report. So if there's something that we can't answer here, we can answer offline, so any questions? Let's move on to slide two there. So this is the sixth engagement of this type since 2018. I believe in 2020 is when we decided that we would do this annually, if you notice, there's nothing in 2019. So we have another one come up in 2025. So when we did this, this 2024 engagement, we continued to see a very strong overall infrastructure in place for maintaining system security. Some of those areas are listed there below in the middle of the bullet points. Some of those items above are very important in maintaining a strong access separation between the business network and the OT network. Now, to remind you what the OT network, that is the network that contains the system controls for the plants and the pump stations. It is a separate network, but it does, there's communication between the two networks. Now, obviously, we want to protect all of our systems, but it is, it is most crucial that we protect the opposite end, I think. So move, move on to slide three. I just want to give you an idea as to what has occurred recently in regards to attacks around the walls, so to speak. If you see the bullet points in the middle there, the in this locations where attacks on wastewater or water systems have occurred in the past 12 months. Now, in each case, I think they were able to recover from or contain the situation, but the fact is, it did happen. So I guess the point I'm trying to make is, this risk is very real. So the district needs to continue to be vigilant around regarding security around, around their systems, especially around their op systems. And I think they are, but we need to continue that efforts. Down the bottom half of the page, you know, our steps along with what IT is already doing, along with operations, we're going to obviously continue to check and penetrate, penetration engagements. We're going to increase the frequency, frequency of the operation system, security audit. That was a recent one we did in March of 24. We'll probably move that up and do another one in FY '26. We'll discuss that with you when we do the risk assessment next spring. And we're also going to add a ransomware assessment to our tech and pen audits as well, so to beef up, cover as much ground as we can. Any questions? Slide four, regarding this attack and pen audit, the scope consists of an internal and external test of this man, district managed systems. Basically, we have two different starting points for the testing, you know, from inside the network and from outside the network. And I'll talk a little about that more later. We didn't include all externally facing systems, the system was summarized there. Externally, we had 10, internally, there's four different systems. Now, testing was performed during portions of June 24, was performed remotely from the Arminino Security Lab in Creve Court. And for the internal testing, basically, we just brought a laptop down here, gave it to IT, they took it upstairs, plugged it into the network, and the, our guys back in the lab were able to access that, that laptop remotely from the security lab. Slide five, the overall objectives were to identify any potential system vulnerabilities and determine if a attacker, attacker could access any critical systems or sensitive data related to district financial information, district employees, suppliers, vendors, customers, then the, the highway critical operation systems. If you move to slide six, so again, I got just focused on too many areas, I kind of mentioned that in the scope. External penetration testing, we wanted to assess whether district network security systems and network perimeter are sufficiently protecting the district system from attack from external sources. Now, internal penetration testing, we wanted to assess whether the systems or sensitive data information is vulnerable to, inaccessible to sources with existing access within the network. So when we did the internal, we used what they called the breach model, and basically this assumes that an attacker breached the system and got into the system. So it assumes attacker has no system log on credentials. So we're basically starting with nothing, they're in the system, but they have no credentials. Now, slide seven, so approach methodology, no effort was made by internal to conceal, we did not try to conceal our testing activities, but at the same time, we were not interrupted by firewall or intrusion prevention systems, and that is, you know, IT did not take action when actionable words were triggered. So think of it this way, you guys, you know, we have the security guy, guards up at the desk up there, they're looking at the monitors and they're watching people outside. It'd be as if we were outside the building trying to get in, they saw us, but they didn't do anything. They let us try to find the vulnerabilities on the building, so that's the best way I can explain it. I'm sorry, excuse me?
Is that, is that what we're, what we're, is that what we're looking for?
We're looking for vulnerabilities, yes.
Okay, but I mean, the, the fact that they didn't, the, the system didn't stop you, was that?
They let us know they saw us.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 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 I didn't explain that. But that's, yeah, so if they stopped us every time, we, we, it would be, it would make the testing difficult, so.
Thank you.
So we did, we attempted to access sensitive data and critical systems, use automated and manual techniques, only starting only from unauthenticated, unauthenticated perspective. Again, we used that breach model. We did focus on depth of access over breadth of coverage, and basically, what I'm saying is that we didn't test every point, we looked for where the vulnerable spots were, and we attacked there. If you move on, slide eight, you can see the standards that we use for our testing, and also the certifications that our testers have, they actually added two more from last year, two more certifications, so they keep getting smarter, it's good. So move to slide nine, again, I wanted to kind of give you a better visual in your mind's eyes how this worked, now kind of again, externally, think of, think of the network as an office building, you can think of it as this office building. Now, we're, again, we're outside the building, we're trying to get anywhere, anywhere we can, the building's locked, we're trying to get in through the doors, we're trying to get through the windows, we're up on the roof, trying to find any vulnerabilities, any weaknesses in the network. Now, internally, we're already in the building, we're in an office locked in an office, say, upstairs on third floor, in an office with nothing in it, we have no keys, we're trying to break out of the office, we're trying to get into other offices, we're trying to move up and down floors, trying to get into anything we shouldn't be getting into. Now, slide 10, as far as the results, externally, we had no success in gaining any system access to district network, now, we could not break in. Now, there was like, like a small office building on the outskirts of the network that we could not get into, but we saw some weaknesses, it made us think, well, if we came back, maybe we had some success there. So we have a recommendation about that one web application. Now, move on to slide 11, internally, we had no success in accessing anything valuable, any critical systems or data. We were able to move around a little bit and gain some access, but we were not able to leverage that movement or access into anything of value. Every time we felt we had something, you know, door slammed in our face, basically. And that's due to the, the strong infrastructure controls that I mentioned in the beginning, beginning of the report. But we do have some recommendations to further strengthen those controls. If you want to slide 12, so the overall assessment, as I, as you can tell by what I just told you, it worked, this worked pretty well. We have satisfactory opinions for both, both external and internal. Again, externally, we had the one item, we had the one web application that we're not able to break into, but have some weaknesses that we like to see strengthened. And then internally, again, satisfactory opinion, we have four items, none of these items are considered significant, either individual or in aggregate. Now, if you move on to slide, any questions? Move on to slide 13, so this is the external item, this is the one external item with the web application, that's the one that's kind of on the edge of the network. So it has to do with what they call content security policies, called CSP. Basically, what that is, it's a set of rules that enables the web applications to control which types of resources and data can be loaded or received in, and from the, the sources they can receive them from, to security mechanisms, basically what they utilize, they call whitelisting or allow listing, basically, anything on the list that's not on the list can't come into the system, that's basically what it works. And the idea is, it's to prevent what they call cross-site scripting. Cross-site scripting is where an attacker would inject malicious code into what would be normally a legitimate website, which would be our website. What it does, the goal, attacker's goal is to compromise, compromise the end users' interaction with the website. So we also be wanting to make sure that doesn't happen. So we know that for one of, again, for one of the web applications, the CSP was not set up properly to, to, you know, prevent from something like this from happening, so we need to fix that. So slide 14, regarding the CSP for the district web application, we recommend that management take steps to adjust the policy to appropriate configurations. IT already talked to them, they're going to add some compensating controls, but eventually it is going to replace the system completely, and that's going to happen within the next six months, the system needs to be replaced. Any questions? All right, slide 15, those two through five all, are all from the internal testing. The first item has, is due with managed file transfer, managed file transfer application, MFT. Basically, we, we identified an outdated instance of an MFT application running on one of the district machines. Now, MFT is an application that entities utilize to transfer data and/or files safely. So the version that we identified at the machine has known vulnerabilities, because it's, it's outdated, basically. And so we were able to exploit that vulnerability and gain access to the application. We did not identify any sensitive information, we were not able to use the access to move into other parts of the network. So we were not able to do anything of, of real value with it, but this still needs to be addressed, we don't know anything doors, doors left open here. So we recommend that management update the application to the most recent version prescribed by the vendor. Actually, the update is, I saw an email, I just verified with Jason, they're actually updating this tonight, so this, this will be taken care of tonight. Slide 16, third-party installation, log on credentials. We identified a single-host hardware device that was installed by a third-party vendor on a non-production subnet. So, I mean, this was, basically has to do with our security system, our physical security system, the cameras and so forth, there, there was an installation going on, and they, they attached that to our, one of our switches on our network. And what happened is they, they, when they, they, the internal host were utilizing the default, out-of-the-box credentials for what they call secure shell. Secure shell is a network communication protocol used for sending basic commands, so as a result of that, we were able to log into that, into that device and access rudimentary assist controls. We didn't identify any sensitive data or systems, anything like that. I think this is, this is a brief window that this, this existed, we did confirm that this has been resolved and eliminated, but this definitely address the cause, so our recommendation is to go and address the cause of this. And so move to slide 17, so we recommend that management establish a protocol in which other departments, in this case, it happened to be building maintenance, are required or expected to communicate with IT when any type of installation or configuration is performed that may affect the district systems, you know, anytime they're attaching or doing anything with one of our switches. A general rule basically should be, if, if they're unsure, just let IT know, let them make the determination, that way they can, they can oversee and monitor the work to make sure the district systems are adequately protected, we don't want any, any unknown loopholes to develop like this. And, yes, sir? Well, it was, it was somewhat done, being done on a security system, in conjunction to building maintenance generally handles that contractor, but they didn't, nobody let IT know that they were doing work that was a chance to our network.
Okay, that, that, okay, that, and, but you're addressing that, right?
Yeah, right, right.
You, you wire IT into?
Right, exactly.
All that kind of.
Right.
Was IT aware of this test far to the, the, do you ever do anything where they're not aware?
Do we, you would test, no, we're, no, we don't, you know.
They're, they're always aware of this testing.
Yes, they are. So I guess, I guess, that's an ID that may be.
Excuse me a second.
It'd have to be deep, but somewhere they shouldn't know you're coming up to the door.
Right, 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 right.
Trustee, trustee Wilson, if I may, not all of IT does know about this, they let us know, but we do not let our internal personnel know, so none of the information security team or server team or anybody knows, until they find it, when they do find it, we let them know, and that's how we take care of it.
You're using IA to do your internal IT evaluation?
Correct.
In a sense.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. Okay, any more questions? All right, slide 18, internal Oracle WebLogic system, I should say one, by the way, we identified one Oracle WebLogic system that was running in version of the software there, significantly outdated. Last year, it was four, so that's, that's my bad. What is an Oracle WebLogic system? Basically, it is a platform, it facilitates communication between the, the client user and the application database system. Now, this particular case, it was used for Oracle EBS, and that's why it's, it's, it's old. So if you go on to slide 19, if you guys remember, we, we upgraded from the, we upgraded EBS to Oracle Fusion in the spring of '23, and this system is a remnant, it's, it's part of the winding down, as, as the previous, the other three that we found last year were the same thing, they've decommissioned those. It was just a system and to make, ensure that the transition was a smooth transition from the old system to the new system, you know. Again, we only found one, and we're not, we're not able to exploit this outdated system. And I just confirmed with Jason, I thought it was going to happen, they actually have decommissioned the system, that it has been, it was a few days ago, it was decommissioned, so that, this has been taken care of. Last item on slide 20, network file system configurations, NFS. NFS is a protocol that allows users to access and manage files on a remote computer as if, as if it was local. The condition we identify was in addition to NFS configuration settings on one of the test servers, the time, so we've identified some weaknesses on, on the settings and one that, one on the test servers, let's make that clear. At the time of testing, there no, since, no, since the day was identified, that we, there was no critical systems here. Now, my reaction, well, it's a test server, who cares? Well, I was wrong. The, the risk here is, sometimes I do move real data over here to the test server to run it, to, to do tests. Also, attacker could leverage the system to launch a transaction to the other parts of the systems. Also, the attacker could get in there and gain insights to our, how our production system actually worked by getting on the test server, so we definitely do want to lock this down. So our recommendation at slide 21 is adjust the configurations to the appropriate settings, I'm not getting into the details, so. Any questions? I think, so, basically, I think all the five, I think two of them have been addressed already, and two will be addressed by the end of this calendar year, and one will be addressed by the end of fiscal year, so we're in pretty good shape on this. Anyone have any questions? Well, I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, Ty.
Thank you, guys.
Next meeting tentative date, December the 31st, 2024. Can I get a motion for adjournment?
Go move. Go move.
Second. Thank you all.
Thank you, and trustee Kistner will get set up for the program management meeting We're ready to begin when you are.
Okay, very good. Good morning, everyone. Can we start with a roll call?
All right, we will put into the record that trustees Wilson, Watson, and Wabi are present in the room, and trustees Kistner and Nick Azison are present online.
Very good. Can we have an approval, a motion to approve the committee minutes from November 5th, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
All right, there are no comments by the chair. We have our engineering department agenda items.
Good morning, trustees. Large volume of items today, so feel free to stop me at any time, we do have a presentation as part of today's agenda as well. First item is the CSO volume reduction green infrastructure. This action appropriates additional funds for the construction of our green infrastructure. This is our annual funding for this program for fiscal year '25. The work to be done consists of construction of green infrastructure facilities at various locations in the city of St. Louis and parts of St. Louis County. The purposes of work is to reduce combined sewer overflows to the Mississippi River within the Bissell watershed per the long-term control plan and the consent decree. This appropriation will fund the rainscaping program, including reimbursement for green infrastructure components on large grants that we have at annual call for, large grants are part of our development review process, and the small grants program. And we, we are still continuing the demolition of vacant buildings in coordination with the city of St. Louis, and then MSD does occasionally build direct infrastructure projects, green infrastructure. This appropriation of $5 million will result in a total appropriation to date of $70,200,000 towards MSD's goal of $100 million for the green infrastructure program over the life of the consent decree. Are there any questions?
Hey, Rich, this is our, this is, so this is everything for the year, and then we don't ever do supplemental or anything, do we?
No, we, we budget based on kind of historically what we've been able to spend and the type of work we're doing. We really have this program kind of planned out, these dollars in the Mississippi River watershed have to be expended by 2033, the end of, the first, the original ending of the consent decree, really, 2034.
So this is, is this only the Mississippi water?
This is the Mississippi, the next one is, we have some additional dollars for the River to Pear, so. Good question. Next item is the CSO volume green infrastructure for River to Pear. This action appropriates additional funds, again, our annual funding for the green infrastructure program. Again, the work to be done consists of construction of green infrastructure located in the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County. The purpose of this work is to reduce combined sewer overflows to River to Pear within the LeMay watershed per the long-term control plan. This appropriation will fund the program reimbursement for green infrastructure components on the large grants and small grants program. This appropriation of $2 million will result in a total appropriation of $17 million towards our goal of $20 million over the life of the consent decree, and we do have the ability to go to the very end of the consent decree. This $20 million was added when we moved the tunnels back, the CSO tunnels back to make room for the incinerator projects within the program. I'm going to, we do, again, we have, we pretty much have these dollars programmed out to the end of the consent decree. The next item, which The next item, which is a component of the green infrastructure program, is the small quality green infrastructure, small grant rainscaping program. This ordinance appropriates additional funds and authorize staff to amend an interagency agreement with Missouri Botanical Garden. This ordinance appropriates additional funds and authorize staff to amend an agreement with the Missouri Botanical Garden for the purpose of St. Louis County Phase II stormwater management plan to improve water quality by preventing harmful pollutants be carried out by stormwater runoff within local water bodies. The purpose of the stormwater quality rainscaping, rainscaping small grants program is to encourage individual landowners to implement green infrastructure techniques on their property to address water quality of stormwater runoff. And of course, it does reduce combined sewer overflows as well, the small grant program. To maximize the effectiveness of small grant program in education and promotion of rainscaping, MSD and the garden develop detailed scopes and reimbursement amounts on an annual basis. Of the $200,000 that will be appropriated for this program, Missouri Botanical Garden will be using approximately $63,000 for the administration of the program. I wanted to give some statistics for this program because it's been highly successful program over the years. This is, over the years, we've started this program in 2015. We've awarded, these are small rain gardens and individual properties of 957 awarded grants to property owners. 697 of those have been completed. So it's been a successful program. In addition, kind of just some, an average year for the Missouri Botanical Garden, working, of course, they're working in conjunction with my planning staff. We hold quarterly meetings, which include three in-person events and one virtual event for people to attend. We see an average attendance of about 50 people that are interested. So we talk to a couple hundred people a year about the grant program. We have communications weekly between us and the garden to make sure everything's going correctly. And then just since January of 2024, this year, we have 105 grants that we have working for approximately $390,000. So the program right now has been very successful for the district, and it really gets the word out to people, the impacts of water quality within the region. All right, moving on. These next couple items are supplemental appropriation for ongoing design projects or construction management work. First one is the Bissell and LeMay wastewater treatment plant fluidized bed incinerator. This is the contract or construction management portion of that project. This appropriates additional funds and authorize staff to amend a design contract with Black and Beach for construction phase services for the fluidized bed incinerator project. Again, the purpose of the project is to replace our multiple hearths incinerators and solid handling facilities with our fluidized bed incinerators at both our LeMay and our Bissell wastewater treatment plants. Black and Beach will provide advisory service during the design, construction, startup after the design build selection is completed. So they're here for the duration. The total construction cost for this project right now is approximately $895,500,000, and we started that construction last fiscal year. The appropriation for Black and Beach is $10 million for these services for this fiscal year, which is equal to what's presented in the budget supplement. The owner's representative of services, as a reminder, during design build for responding to questions during construction for assisting with equipment startup, operator training, and assisting with the certification once the project is complete to make sure it's meeting regulatory compliance. As with all of our design contracts, there is an MWBE component to this construction management contract. When we procured Black and Beach, there was no goal, but Black and Beach had a commit, an original commitment of 25% participation by minority and women consulting firms. Right now, with this amendment, this $10 million, they're anticipating 47.36% participation this year, which will give them a current participation of just over 30% on the contract so far.
Rich, what, what percentage of, this is $10 million on top of another 30 million over the last, since '19, and that's just an estimate. What percentage of, of the project cost is going to these fees, the A and E fees?
I don't have a projection, but I can get that for you, what the total percentage of the cost is. In a typical design, depending on the size of the project, obviously, the larger the project, the less the percentage.
Right.
But on a smaller project, you know, it can range anywhere from 5% to 20%. This is a little different because this, they're provide, they provided the preparation of the 30% design documents for the design build project, and it helped administer the, that procurement. And now they're taking on the construction management portion. The construction management portions of projects, Alan, is there a general percentage that we have?
Sorry, I was reminded three times, and I still forgot. Like you said, it really depends on the size and scope of the project, but that, you know, a 10% or so, the 15 is a, is a normal range?
And keep in mind, this, this one here is even a little more expansive. We're working at two separate locations. So basically, we have two construction management staffs basically monitoring two projects as part of this one.
But we, didn't we just approve a million dollar extension for KIA and Kwame, I think?
Yeah, their, their, KIA, that was last, last month.
Right.
They, they, they're overseeing other projects at the, at the LeMay and Bissell treatment plants, and Lower Merrimack, actually, so. So this is strictly for the fluidized bed project. And I can get, we can get you probably some projections as well.
It just seems, it seems to be excessive. I mean, I don't know if it's excessive or not, just a lot.
It's, it's, there's a lot of staff at both these locations to monitor the work that's going on. There's a tremendous amount of work.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the Mississippi River flood wall ORS pump station rehabilitation. This appropriates funds and authorize staff to amend a design contract. This is also design build owner's representative. It's authorized staff to amend contract with Black and Beach for advisory services during design, construction, startup on the ORS pump station rehabilitation project Phase Four. So we've had multiple phases of this project ongoing, albeit as design build. Purpose of this project is to rehabilitate and replace deteriorating components of the St. Louis flood protection systems that are operated and maintained by MSD. Advisory service again, including reviewing the design build progress to make sure the project stays on track, schedule, and within budget. Preliminary construction cost for the Mississippi ORS flood Phase Four is $13 million. And this project, actually, a design build project is later in today's agenda. So that construction is scheduled to start this fiscal year. This appropriation for $175,000 is equal to what was proposed in the budget supplement. This contract, this is the eighth year of the multi-year repairs going on in Mississippi flood wall ORS system. We are continuing, we're going to annually have projects on the Mississippi flood wall. It's required. We have annual inspections by the Corps of Engineers. Most of these pump stations were built pretty much at the start of the district in the '60s and the '70s. So keeping these up and maintained, and before they reach their end of useful life, we're seeing a lot of gate replacements, things like that. I'll cover a little more of that detail on the design build project later. All right. All right, the next five items are design and planning contracts for fiscal year '25. In other words, the work that they're going to do this fiscal year will represent future work in either design projects or planning the program farther out. The first one is Cox Creek Pump Station Forest Main Master Plan Pre-Design Study. This appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter to a master plan study contract. This ordinance authorizes the district to enter a contract with StanTech Consulting Services for this project. The project consists of evaluating the existing facilities, development, future development to identify preferred alternatives to deliver wastewater generated in the Cox Creek watershed and Missouri River sub areas to the Missouri River wastewater treatment plant. Just to kind of give you some perspective, this is all, everything in the valley and along the Missouri River up to our treatment plant in Maryland Heights. So that area obviously is undergoing a lot of changes. We've just completed replacement of a lot of the forest mains in those areas and getting the system in and operating, but it's changing all the time. So we want to make sure we stay ahead of our systems in that area. There were two other proposals considered on this project. Engineering Services will, will look at evaluation of multiple alternatives of the development as a preferred alternative and scope for potential final design of this system or modifications of that system. Again, there was an MWBE requirement on this project of 18% minority participation and 13% women consulting firm participation, and StanTech has committed to 18 and 13 as required by the goals. Next item is the Prospect Hill landfill improvement project. This appropriates funds and authorize staff to enter a design contract. This ordinance authorizes the district to enter into a contract with FISOR Engineering for the design of the Prospect Hill landfill improvements. This project consists of design services and appropriation and construction documents for the modification of the existing MDNR permit for the special waste disposal operating permit and include documents for the modification of this landfill, which will include grading and berm improvements, leach aid collection improvements, and for groundwater and hydrological field work and analysis. The purpose of this project is obtain permitting from MDNR followed by construction for the vertical expansion to extend the useful life of this existing MSD-owned and operated Prospect Hill landfill by approximately 10 years for the disposable, it's used for disposal of our incinerator ash that's generated at both our LeMay and Bissell treatment plants. The total construction cost estimate once this project is designed is $27 million, and construction is anticipated to begin in 2028. The, there were, there was one other proposal considered on the project. Our appropriation of $600,000 for services is above what we had originally planned. If you heard me during my description, one of the things we did not, had not planned for was additional groundwater and hydrological field work and potentially even the design of additional groundwater monitoring and, and collection. We did not think we were going to have to do that, but once we started talking with the MDNR, it became apparent that we were going to have to, to do that work. So there will be future appropriations for this contract in future fiscal years, both for design and for managing the project during construction. FISOR has committed to minority participation of 23.7% and WB participation of approximately 15%, which meets the 18 and 15, and 13% goal on the project.
So how long is this thing going to be useful?
It'll be, it'll, well, obviously, by the time we get it done, it'll be probably another three, three to five years, then another additional 10 years after that.
And do we, is this, do we use this now?
It is currently being used for the same purpose. So we're trying to stay ahead of it. I guess 10 years from now, or probably eight years from now, we're going to start determining where we can go from there. Probably be a project to close this one.
You'll be retired by then.
More than likely.
What is this, so how do we treat, is this like a big mound, and then we just put in?
Yeah, I'm not totally familiar. Basically, it's a typical landfill. It's a hole in the ground. We bring our ash there. We do, in fact, earlier this year, because it has leach aid like typical landfills, we treat that leach aid. We're actually enhancing our treatment system at this landfill to treat for PFOS. It's a pilot project that MDNR is going to pay for. So in other words, we're going to treat PFOS before it enters our system. Right now, it goes to the plant.
This is on the riverfront?
It is. It's, it's the old concrete quarry, the limestone quarry for the concrete plant that's on north, is that North River View there?
Yeah, the Cassley thing.
Yes.
Yeah. What's it, how are we going to treat this when it's, as it's, when it's done?
Well, there's, obviously, there's permitting requirements and there's closure requirements. So there will be requirements at the end. I don't know that you'll ever not stop collecting leach aid and monitoring. So that's, it's going to be a continuous operation even when the landfill is closed. At that point, we'll have to seek another avenue for, for the ash at that point.
But when, but when this thing is done in 10 years plus, whenever, it's going to be, we're going to put trees on it, and it's going to be a park, or?
Yeah, it'll be part, there'll be a closure plan. I don't know that we've thought that far ahead, but.
Okay.
So I doubt it'll be a park. Landfills typically, if you see them around the area that have been closed, they don't allow trees to be grown on top of the landfill itself. We can, we can screen the area with trees, certainly, but we're going to have to abide by the, by the closure rules that MDNR puts in place. You know, hopefully, long term, we may find additional uses for our ash, which could potentially extend the life of the landfill, but that's something that we got, got to see if we can work out over the next, you know, several years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next three, kind of excited to bring these. These are the first three design contracts that utilize funding from our new stormwater rate. We are getting a portion of that rate in fiscal year '25, just a small portion. We'll start getting those dollars in, starting in February. So these next three contracts are just a kickstart for the design. The first one is the General Service Agreement for Stormwater Capital Projects Design Contract A. This ordinance authorizes the district to enter a contract with Loch Mueller for design under this Contract A. The project consists of design and preparation of construction documents for one potential sewer project. Purpose of this project is solve stormwater flooding and erosion problems. Construction cost estimate for this project is $1,130,000, and construction is anticipated to begin in fiscal year '27. This project is titled Alamania Street 4709 Storm Improvements. And again, that project will be built in fiscal year '27. There were four other proposals considered on the project. This appropriation of $400,000 for the design is $500,000 less than what was proposed, proposed in the budget. There originally another project that was planned for them to design. We pulled that one. It wasn't ready for design at this time. Loch Mueller is committed to 35, almost 36% MWBE participation, which meets our design goal of 31% combined for minority and women participation for this project. The next one is Storm Capital Improvement Design Contract B. This ordinance authorizes the district to enter into contract with Oats for the design, Oats and Associates for the design of Contract B projects. The project consists of design and preparation of documents for multiple stormwater infrastructure improvements. The design contract consists of five potential sewer projects. The purpose of this project is to solve stormwater flooding and erosion. Construction cost estimate for these five projects is $1,300,000. Construction cost estimate for these five projects is $1,307,000. And again, the construction for these, once their design is scheduled to begin in fiscal year 2027. The names of these five projects are Aletha Avenue Storm Improvements, Berwick Drive Storm Improvements, Briar Wick Storm Improvements, Claymont Storm Improvements, and Novara Storm Improvements. Again, the, there were four other proposals considered. Our appropriation for design is $85,000 less than what we proposed in the budget presented in the CIRP. Oats has committed to 23% minority and 14% women participation, which meets our 18 and 13% goal on the project. And then the final planning, our project for stormwater is, is assistance for stormwater planning. This action appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter into a stormwater planning contract with Intuition and Logic. This consultant will provide planning and system to support the implementation of the district-wide stormwater capital program following the proposition, passing of Proposition S. Services will supplement the capacity of my internal staff to address flooding and erosion problems. Tasks will include completing preliminary studies for the CIRP, updating project prioritization procedures, and evaluating some of our existing identified projects. There were two other proposals considered for this project. Our appropriation of $1 million for planning services is equal to the proposed funding presented in the CIRP. Intuition and Logic has committed to 18% minority and 13% women participation, which meets our goal for the project. All right, these are, first two are ongoing construction projects that we're doing supplemental appropriations. These were planned appropriations, multi-year projects where we fund over multiple years. The first one is the biggie, the Bissell Lima Fluidized Bed Incinerator Project. This is our annual appropriation for the life, over the life of this project. It appropriates additional funds for our design-build-construction project. Again, the work to be done consists of the design and construction of the fluidized bed incinerators that are Bissell and Lima treatment plants. It includes redundant sludge acceptance systems, solids handling system improvements at both plants. The purpose of the project is a long-term solution for solids handling at these treatment plants. And again, the project is scheduled to be completed in September 2028, so there are additional appropriations beyond fiscal year 2025. This is a partial funding request. This supplemental appropriation is, are $265 million, which will bring our total appropriation for this project to 537 million. There'll be future supplemental appropriations, which will bring the total appropriation authorized at the beginning of the project of 900 million. This project is, is funded by state revolving funds. There's been some press out there regarding our state revolving fund, the largest MDNRs ever issued, I think in the $600 million range. So that's been out there. So this is the one I, I promised a presentation on. I have Alan Mueller, my Assistant Director, over our construction management group, and he's overseeing the Blackton Beach contract, which is overseeing this construction. So we felt it was important to kind of give you an update with the amount of money that's being spent, what it's being spent on, what progress is being made, some of the things, the early cash flow dollars that you're appropriating. So Alan, at this time, I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Rich. Good morning, trustees. But I'd like to start with a high-level overview, just reminder of the project. So this project is replacing current 1960-era incinerators with fluidized bed incinerators. The result will be a modernization of the process with a 70% reduction in overall air emissions. We are utilizing design-build for this project, so as you'll see, although we're still designing, we're also constructing at each facility at both Lima and Bissell wastewater treatment plants. And we're currently scheduled to be substantially complete in March of 2028. Next slide. So a general project schedule, our really, our real project schedule is about 150, 200 pages long, but it boils down to this at a very high level, and I know it's a little tough to see, so I'll just go through the key points. 100% design completion is scheduled to be submitted in February of 2025. The 90% design was submitted and accepted this past September. We have begun and completed demolition of key structures at both facilities. There'll be more, much more demolition to occur in the future, but we have removed the key facility so we could start construction. The excavation of the solids processing building, that is the main building that, that processes and dewateres the sludge and the incineration process is in. We have completed the excavation of the subfloors on those buildings at both locations. We're currently working on the deep foundations at both locations, and we're also installing, began pouring the concrete and reinforced steel at Bissell. I'll get into a little more of that later. We anticipate beginning placement of structural steel this spring, spring of '25. Placements of the first pieces of the actual incinerator equipment, which will be the windbox, is scheduled for late summer, so around August of '25 next year. And we anticipate startup and commissioning beginning in the late '26 and lasting the entire year of 2027. Next slide, please. This slide, we're just highlighting what, what our current appropriation is, what we're asking for, and what we have left to ask for. So our current appropriation is $272 million. This supplemental appropriation request of $265 million, this will bring our current appropriation, if approved, to 537 million. That will leave us with another $363 million of future supplemental appropriations. And I'd like to point out that this supplemental appropriation of $265 million will, will get us through March of 2026, so we won't come back for another supplemental appropriation until March of 2026.
What a, how confident are we that the, the number of 363 will be the number?
Well, currently, we are, we have scheduled approved a $900 million job.
Right.
Right now, we have received, we've realized over in the design-build process, over $20 million in savings for reducing some building size at Bissell and some other efficiencies we've gained. We've also, there was scaffolding, I don't want to go too much, I can go as much as little detail as you want, but there was scaffolding and walkway spaces we've eliminated. We've eliminated a couple million dollars in office space, which didn't seem to make sense with the design that we currently have on the table. And the big reduction was in actually doing, shrinking down the fluidized bed incinerator to solids processing building at Bissell to make it very similar to Lima. So that was our big savings. So we're over $20 million right now of savings. So my goal is to be very confident in that number and not come in with anything higher.
Aren't we talking about eight? Didn't you mention on the, on the contract, on the, the design contract that we're talking at eight fifty or eight seventy?
I think the, the contract value originally was what, eight ninety-five or something like that? So we, we anticipated a, a appropriation, in other words, we add contingencies typically for a $900 million contract. Right now, we're seeing less than that, but again, things will arise, obviously, but obviously, always our goal, never to come back for any supplemental, unplanned supplemental, we'll put it that way.
Right.
Actually, this next slide kind of covers a little bit on expenditures.
I jump ahead, sorry.
That's all right.
Next slide, please. So with this slide, what I really want to point out and discuss is where have we been and where are we going with this job? So our expenditures through December, from the beginning of the project through December of 2024, there's a little bit of projection there, obviously, is a little over $200 million. And what you can see there on the left is that we have focused a lot on design, bonds, insurance, and equipment procurement. We've also begun construction, but construction is about 30% of the overall cost at this point. On the right, what you're looking at is our anticipated expenditures in 2025, which are projected to be $272 million. And we're, we're almost done. I mean, we have $8 million worth of design left in 2025. However, we are going heavy into construction and procurement. So on the left, the procurement, you're seeing the equipment procurement, that was to get the equipment ordered. We have very long lead times, which I'll get into in a minute, and also set our pricing. On the right, what you're seeing is equipment's being delivered. We're going to have to pay for that equipment coming up next year, so as it starts coming in. So those are the things I wanted to highlight with this slide of where we've been and where we're going. Next slide, please. So where are we on the design and construction? Let's start with design. As I stated earlier, we've completed 90% design. It was submitted and accepted in September of '24. We're still anticipating, we're on schedule for our February 2025 100% design completion submittal. And I, I mentioned just a second ago about the equipment procurement and lead times. So why are we spending money upfront like this? It's because our lead times for a lot of this equipment are very long, and to get it designed, built, and here, on the proper sequencing for construction, we had to do this upfront in addition to setting our pricing. So transformers currently have 800-day lead times. That, and that 800-day lead time was before the hurricanes hit Florida and the southeast United States. I'm not sure if that's still the case. We might be a little bit longer than that right now. Motor control centers, 600-day lead times, variable frequency drives, 560-day purge air blowers, 520 fluidized air blowers, 500. You guys are getting, getting the point here. Dewatering centrifuges, 420-day lead times, and fluidized bed incinerator reactors. There's a typo there, that's really 350 days, not 200 days, lead times.
Where's this thing coming from?
All over the country. There's some stuff coming from overseas. It's mainly, though, all over the country. Next slide, please. The construction status, we, as I said before, we're working at both Bissell and Lima wastewater treatment plants. So at Bissell, we've completed the demolition of the sludge storage tanks. I'll show you a couple pictures. We've completed the excavation of the solids processing basement. The, we've completed the construction of the dewatering system. At Bissell, the groundwater there is highly tied to the Mississippi River since we're adjacent to it, so we have to have a very robust dewatering system in place to make sure our construction can continue. We've completed the sheet piling to support the basement section of the building. We've also driven 293 H piles for the deep foundation support, and we've actually begun the basement slab construction at Bissell with the reinforced basement slab. At Lima, we've demolished the service building. We've completed the excavation of the basement with the supports. We've completed pre-boring and all drilled, at all drilled pier locations. We are currently working on drilled peers at the, at the basement section of the Lima. We have 131 drilled peers to do. We're well over halfway at this point. And we have future drilled peers at both of these and, and slabs to put in under the incineration process. So you'll hear and you'll see some photos here of the building. You'll see a big hole and working in the hole. This, the, the building itself, the solids processing building, think of it as two halves. The hole you're looking at, the excavation, that's just one half. That's the solids processing and dewatering side. The incineration side does not have a basement, so you could take that and double the size of the excavation for the whole size of the building. So when I, when you see that we have more peers, more H piles to do, that's the second half the building we'll start constructing, but obviously, we're starting from the bottom up with the basement. Next slide, please. So just a couple of construction photos here for you. On the left, it's usually just demo. On the left, you're looking at the Lima service building coming down, and on the right, it's the Bissell, the sludge storage tank demo, next. Some excavations. On the left, it's the excavation at, at the Lima facility for the solids processing building, and on the right, it's, it's at Bissell. Excavation at this point, as I said, is complete at both facilities. Next slide, please. What you're looking at here, this slide on the left is Lima, on the right is Bissell. One thing I would like to point out, the left, because of the different geotechnical, geological features at, at Bissell versus Lima, the design engineers have designed using drilled peers at Lima, and at Bissell, we are using H piles, driving H piles for the foundation, for the deep foundations to hold the building up, support the building. And what you can see is the, the drilled peers going in on the left and the piling being driven on the right at Bissell. Next, please. And one final slide here. On the left, you could see we're beginning pouring the basement slabs, just a close-up of the rebar and the concrete being poured. On the right, pouring the concrete slabs, we've actually begun pouring the walls as well. It's hard to get a scope of the size of this, so we like the, the picture on the right showing, you know, with, with the folks down there actually doing the work, how big this is. And one thing I'd also like to point out, on the far right of the right-hand picture, there's a person standing there in an orange shirt. That concrete slab at that, on the sides of this, is three foot thick with reinforced, with multiple layers of reinforced steel going in there to support the weight of this building, the equipment ultimately, and transfer the loads to the end. So just give you a scope of how thick this base slab is and points. This will be the dewatering side. The incinerator will be, we haven't begun the construction on that side yet. But this will be all the sludge, dewatering equipment, a lot of very heavy, heavy equipment, structural steel, transferring loads at this place, at these locations.
Are there any questions at this time? Obviously, at any time, if you're curious about where we are with the project, obviously, I'll give you some type of a presentation like this with the amount of money we're spending every time we come for an appropriation, but I think probably over the next year, when we start coming out of the ground and things like that, it's a possibility for Brett to possibly get something out to the trustees for a field visit. I think probably better, once we start coming out of the ground and start working on the incinerator building itself, would probably be about the most construction that's going to happen. And at that point, some of the equipment will be, have come in, so you can kind of get the, kind of sense of the size of the equipment, things like that, that, that we're going to be bringing at both locations. So something to think about when it's warmer and not snow on the ground, so. All right, thank, thank you. Move on, still have quite a few agenda items. Next item is Warsen Wood Sanitary Leaf. This action appropriates additional funds. These are planned funds for an ongoing project being constructed by Fred M. Luth. The work consists of construction of approximately 10,560 feet of eight to 40-inch, 48-inch diameter sewer. It's to reduce building backups and relieve overcharged sanitary sewers, and this project will provide for the elimination of three constructed sanitary sewer overflows. And this is a partial funding request. That's a planned supplemental request of $6,500,000. Will bring our total appropriation- Will bring our total appropriation on this project to $14,500,000, and will fully fund the project over the next fiscal year. The next item is a new procurement. It's on the Mississippi River ORS flood wall pump station rehabilitation phase four. We had a previous appropriation for our owner's rep on this earlier. This action actually appropriates funds and authorize us to enter a design-build contract. The work consists of design and construction of four large roller gates and two large sluice gates, and the replacement of six actuators at the Mill Creek Pump Station, which is our largest pumping station. Design and construction of one large sluice gate at the Gimlin Pump Station, and the replacement of two hydraulic actuators at each of the Fillmore and Upton Outfall Structures. Again, the purpose of this project is to restore function, improve reliability, and increase our operational efficiencies to the essential components of the flood wall protection system, which also is our combined sewer overflow regulation system. The district received three proposers on this project, three proposals. The selected proposer was Albarisi Constructors. Their design partner is Gonzalez. The cost proposal on this particular project was below our design estimate, and our appropriation, which is a multi-year appropriation, a total of $10.8 million is below our two-year planned appropriation. This appropriation is for $7 million, and we'll have an additional 3.8 plan for fiscal year 2026. Again, this being a design-build project, both our designer and our contractor required to meet our minority and women participation goals. Gonzalez has committed to 31.5% to meet our combined 31% goal of 31%. So they meet that goal. And a construction side, Albarisi is committed to 20.22% minority and women participation, which meets our 10% minority goal and our 10% women's goal. All right, the next item is the Two Mile Creek Outfall Sanitary Relief Project.
I think we skipped one.
Thank you. I don't know. I had, there was staples or the paperclips were stuck together. So we'll go back to the Hawthorne Estates before the Mississippi flood wall. Hawthorne Estates Sanitary Relief. This action appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter a construction contract. The work consists of construction approximately 1,800 feet of six-to-12-inch sanitary sewers and appliances. The purpose of this project is to reduce building backups and relieve overcharged sanitary sewers. The district received seven bids for this project. The low bid was from Understall Contracting Company. The bid was below our design estimate, and our appropriation of $1,100,000 is below the original budget for the project. Understall has committed to just over 20% minority and women participation, which meets our 10% minority and 10% women's goals. And I apologize. Thank you for catching me there. Now I think we're on the right one. All right, Two Mile Creek Outfall Sanitary Relief. This action appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter a construction contract. The work consists of construction approximately 11,400 feet of eight-to-48-inch diameter sewers and appliances. The purpose of this project is to relieve overcharged sanitary sewers and reduce building backups. The district received five bids for this project. The low bids was from Bates Utility Company. The bid was below our design estimate, and our two-year appropriation of $18,400,000 with $14 million in this fiscal year 2025 is below our original two-year budget for the project. Bates Utilities has committed to just over 20% MWB participation, which meets our 10% minority goal and our 10% women's goal for the project. The next item. Does somebody have a question?
So I'm trying to understand this. So we've got a, the low bid was 17,400?
Correct.
And RS, the appropriation amount is 14 million?
I'm sorry. Well, there'll be an additional appropriation in fiscal year '26. We're for funding it over two years.
Got you. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, it's 14 million this year, and then 4.4 million next year. And originally, we had planned 8.75. So next fiscal year, we'll see the benefit of this bid.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the Dixon Storm Sewer Project. This action appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter a construction contract. The work to be done consists of construction approximately 286 lineal feet of storm sewer from 15 to 24-inch in diameter. The purpose of the project is to reduce yard flooding on Dixon Street and East Essex Avenue in the city Kirkwood. The district received six bids for this project. The low bid was from Enterprise Sewer and Drain Incorporated. The bid was slightly above our designer's estimate, and our appropriation of $150,000 is below the original budget for the project. Enterprise Sewer and Drain is committed to 28.32% minority and women participation, which exceeds our 10% minority and 10% women's goal. Next item are support services for my engineering and for my Department of Environmental Compliance staff. The first one is radar rainfall data. This action appropriates funds and authorized staff to enter into a contract with VIEW and Associates. This contract allows the district to continue maintaining the integration between its existing rain gauge network and NEXRAD radar data in an effort to produce what we refer to as GAR or Gauge Adjusted Radar Rainfall, which is used by the district engineers in various ways for planning and design and for our consultants in our operations division. This contract provides web-accessible rainfall data to the district personnel. VIEW and Associates also provides quality assurance and quality control of our extensive fixed rain gauge network and notifies the district if there are any issues found during their calibration process. As part of this contract, VIEW continuously evaluates our telemetry system and rain gauge network. Radar rainfall is a technology used for hydraulic modeling and calibration, confirming sewer flow metering response to rain events, our inflow and infiltration assessments, and our CSO and SSL planning control, and preliminary final designs. This contract for radar rainfall is $200,000, and this contract is renewable for an additional four years based on performance. This appropriation of $200,000 is greater than what we had originally anticipated, but that's based on the bids we received or cost from VIEW and Associates. Are there any questions? This is valuable data. The district, when we have a rain event such as we just had with the 11 inches of rain, it allows, it's really beneficial to both public affairs, engineering operation, and knowing where the significant amount of rain happened and where we can put our resources and respond to the rain events.
Maybe we can share with Tim so he's not late to the next meeting during the rain.
All right, thank you. The next item is stream flow water quality sampling. This action appropriates funds and authorized staff to amend an existing contract with GeoSynTech Consultants and appropriates funds for this amendment. The purpose of this contract is to perform water quality sampling to comply with our CSO post-construction monitoring program as required by the consent decree. Samples are collected from six sites on the Mississippi River on a bi-weekly basis. Samples are also collected from three sites on the Missouri River every four weeks to establish upstream background concentration of water quality impacts from the St. Louis area. Water quality monitoring is required by EPA, MDNR to demonstrate compliance with water quality standards as part of our long-term control plan and consent decree. The original contract with this venture allowed for one year with an option renewal year for two additional based on performance. This will be the third of that three years. So we'll rebid this contract for these as a, we call this a large sewers, a large system sampling. It's for the Mississippi and the Missouri River. Internally, we do the sampling on streams throughout this, and river to pair throughout the St. Louis area. We do that with our internal staffs. We don't have a boat, don't want to go out, so. All right. All right, the following six, I'm kind of, kind of blend together, so that'll get us through a large chunk. The following six items will appropriate funds for the fiscal year 2025 municipal stormwater grant program from the respective OMCI sub-districts. This will be the last of the OMCI grants. Next year, we'll be bringing grant program from the new stormwater rate. There will be some OMCI grants that will come from the reestablished, I think, of three of these OMCI's, but this will be the last year of the six OMCI grant programs. This ordinance appropriates additional funds and authorized staff to enter into intergovernmental agreements under $50,000 not involving MSD infrastructure with municipalities where revenues collected by the following OMCI's. Coldwater Creek, Deer Creek, Gravois Creek, Seminary, Sugar Creek, and University City OMCI's. Intergovernmental agreements, $50,000 and greater, I'll bring to you individually for those agreements on those projects. We actually have three of those on today's agenda. The OMCI reimbursement allocates approximately one-half of the OMCI revenue generated in each municipality back to the municipality for eligible stormwater expenditures. And to give you an example of eligible stormwater expenditures include storm sewer and inlet construction, drainage improvements, stream bank stabilization, and erosion control projects, clearing under bridges or clearing detention basins, stormwater planning or engineering costs, and other storm related expenses determined appropriate by the district. Activities such as their MS4 compliance and routine maintenance that the municipalities are required to do is not an eligible expense. The municipalities and OMCI revenue allocated to each of these municipalities based on the OMCI's are listed on the write-ups, but I'm gonna give you a summary here rather than go through all six. In the Coldwater Creek OMCI, we're allocating $1,129,605 to 13 municipalities in St. Louis County. The Deer Creek OMCI, we're allocating $2,117,095 to 20 municipalities. In the Gravois Creek OMCI, we're allocating and appropriating $824,673 to seven municipalities in St. Louis County. In the Seminary OMCI, we are appropriating $139,993 to four municipalities in St. Louis County. In the Sugar Creek OMCI, we're appropriating $161,889 to two municipalities. In the University City OMCI, we're appropriating and allocating $502,198 to nine municipalities in St. Louis County. Are there any questions? All right, the next...
Sorry, I gotta, I gotta...
Sure.
Well, I, why are we sending $300 to the city of Grantwood Village? I mean, what is that going to do?
Well, they actually, they will ask us to hold that, and once, once they have a project that they're gonna perform, they'll, in other words, there's other dollars from previous years.
Okay.
And Grantwood Village, actually, I think gets from a couple of the OMCI's.
Okay.
So no, they're, they'll expend it. I mean, they do do some work within, within the city that, that will utilize that funding. Yeah, I know, some of the dollars are, in fact, in the new program and the Prop S program, we had a minimum allocation to the municipalities. But this was what we decided we would do. And then some of the municipalities that have those type dollars...
Yeah.
...will, will not request it. In other words, they'll tell us to keep it.
And then we just sit on it?
We'll put that as part of projects that we do within the OMCI area.
Okay. Thanks.
Did you say that there used to be in the past, or had been a minimum amount?
Apologize for, I'll clarify. Under the new grant program that we'll administer with Proposition S, coming from the Prop S funds, there is a minimum grant amount to the municipalities of $30,000 when we, when we're established in that grant program. This particular allocation is based on the tax revenue that the municipality provides to the OMCI, and it's 50% of what Grantwood Village participates. So we, that's how we allocated. In the new Prop S grant program, we're allocating based, municipalities based on population with minimum, with a minimum amount of grant.
Okay. And is that so, are there municipalities that will have populations that fall below that such that they're not eligible for a grant?
No. Every municipality, all 89, will be eligible for a grant under the new district-wide program. But on the OMCI funding, the OMCI funding were established back when the district was originally established. The funding within those, within those OMCI's has to be spent within those OMCI's. On the district-wide revenue stream that we have allows us to allocate differently. In other words, it's, we're not prohibited to, in other words, we could spend throughout the district.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Both good questions.
Sorry. Two, what about unincorporated areas? Do we allocate money to unincorporated?
We do. St. Louis County, we allocate dollars. They'll get an allocation in the city of St. Louis. We'll get an allocation under the new Prop S program.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah, we're, the program, we're kind of in place, but you will see more from me in discussion on, on, on the Prop S grant program in the next fiscal year. Thank you. All right, the next three are actually grants that were, that were requested by municipalities, and we're appropriating, the dollars are appropriated, but we're entering into the agreements with the municipalities. The first ones, in the Coldwater Creek OMCI with Breckenridge Hills, the ordinance authorized the district to enter an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Breckenridge Hills for eligible stormwater expenditures. Agreement with Breckenridge Hills will cover the costs of the Isolda Avenue Bridge replacement. The city has completed design and construction for the replacement of a failing bridge at Isolda Avenue with a new culvert. The total cost of the project was $439,617. They're using some MoDoc grant funding, and the total cost, the project, the city is participating to the tune of $132,765, and they're using a total of $51,469 of their grant funding for that project. The next one is also from the Coldwater OMCI. It's an agreement with St. Anne. It authorizes us to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the city of St. Anne for eligible stormwater expenditures. Their project is the St. Anne Golf Course Storm Improvement Project. They've completed design and construction for 1,900 lineal feet of storm sewers. This is a multi-year project, so there are earlier agreements for this project. The estimated total cost for the project is just over $500,000, and this agreement will reimburse up to $83,546 for that project. And then the last project is from the Seminary OMCI and its agreement with the city of Shrewsbury. It authorized the district to enter to a... It authorizes the district to enter to an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Shrewsbury, collected from the Seminary OMCI. This project is town center storm water repairs. This project was professional engineering, design, and construction of storm sewers and inlets at 5,200 Shrewsbury Avenue. The estimated cost of the proposed project is $88,940. This agreement will provide reimbursement up to $84,219. Any questions? All right, the final three items today are, are all requests for authorization from the board to proceed to condemnation on three separate projects to acquire easements to keep our projects on schedule. The first one is the L-51 Pump Station Forest Main Improvement Project. This ordinance authorized the staff to proceed with further condemnation efforts, including the filing of all necessary court pleadings or documents leading to the acquisition of permanent or temporary easements on one parcel of ground. The easements will be used for the construction of approximately 3,300 feet of two-inch forest main, 8,300 feet of 36-inch forest main, and various appurtenances in an area located between the district's L-51 pump station along Creve Corneille Road to our Missouri River Treatment Plant. This project will provide a parallel forest main to our existing 36, excuse me, 36-inch L-51 forest main that's currently in operation. The purpose of this project is replace an existing forest main with nearing the end of the useful life existing forest main that is there. The district has, there were five easements total in the project. We've gotten four so far. We have one left. We are in continuing negotiation, there's a drawing of it. This easement is adjacent to Creve Corneille Road, and obviously, we're, we're, we have an existing forest main there, so we're putting a new one alongside of it, which required additional easement. It puts us a little farther into this person's property, which, which is a farm field. We're, right now, we're, we've gone back and forth on the value of that property, and usually on these type negotiations, it, it depends on what time you're in there, whether or not impacts some of their crops for that period of time. So we do not anticipate going to condemnation, but we haven't been able to reach a final agreement, so we're seeking that authorization at this time. Next one is a Mulberry Creek Sanitary Relief Project. This ordinance authorized staff to proceed with further condemnations, and this is on two parcels of ground in the City of Crestwood and Sunset Hills. The easements are necessary to construct a project consisting of 4,200 feet of eight-to-27-inch diameter sanitary sewers. The purpose of project is alleviate building backups and wet weather events, and it also removes one sanitary sewer overflow at the upstream end of the project. We've been unable to negotiate with two of the property owners. There were a total of 15 easements acquired, so we've gotten 13. We're down to the final two. These projects are, these are right next to each other, parcels 40 and 44. As you can see, one of the parcels were taking up quite a bit of their yard in order to make a turn in the new sewer system and, and going between two properties on the other property. Both of these property owners have, have hired an attorney. We are still negotiating with their attorney. We anticipate, we're hoping we can get these easements, but in order to keep the project moving along, we're looking for that authorization. And then finally, is the Valette Court Sanitary Sewer Replacement. This is to replace an existing sewer that's in need of repair and causing us issues with the sanitary system. It requires, it's for one parcel of ground, that, on the project, there were three easements on this one, we've acquired two of them. We're working with the property owner. Our issue here is we're, we're having difficulty getting any kind of response whatsoever from the property owner. Typically, once we move to condemnation, they get a letter, then, then they normally will come to the table. It's not a significant easement, as you can see from the display, but it is disrupting a corner of their property. But the permanent easement, the sewer just barely crosses, but unfortunately, we have to do most of the work on this particular property. But it's a, it's a sanitary sewer causing issue that we need to replace. Are there any questions? All right, I promised shorter agendas the next two meetings, so, but I appreciate your patience and, and thank you. Trustee Kisser, that concludes my agenda.
Sorry, I was talking with my mic off. Um, yeah, so that, I don't think we have any other business, so our next tentative meeting date is December 31st, 2024, and are we ready to adjourn? Okay.
Are you ready when you are?
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the 309th Meeting of the Finance Committee of Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District. Might I get a roll call, please?
Yes, the record will reflect that Trustees Wilson, Watson, and Wabi are present in the room, and Trustees Nicholson and Kissner are present online.
I'd like to get a motion to approve the minutes of November the 5th.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
With no objection, minutes are approved. I think these first two, the items, the next two items are yours, Mr. G. How are you this morning?
Doing well, sir, how are you?
Great, great.
Thank you. So the first item that I will cover relates to the district's independent external audit services. Back in 2021, we issued an RFP for external auditing services. Those services included audits of our pension plans and our financial statements. Clifton Lawson Allen was awarded that contract. The term of the contract was, it was a one-year contract with four option renewal periods. This particular action would allow the district to exercise option year three of four and would authorize the district to continue to have Clifton Lawson Allen to conduct the audits. Are there any questions that I can address? Thank you, hearing none. I will move to the next agenda item, which is the Financial Status Report. You should have in your packet a chart with four quadrants on it. I will start with the quadrant in the top right-hand corner, which gives you a forecast of our user charge revenues, these are wastewater charges. Overall, we are forecasting that we will come in about $65,000 favorable to budget. It's always great to be favorable, but this is a really close forecast. What we're projecting at this time is that our commercial revenues will be about $1.8 million above budget, and our residential revenues will be about $1.7 million below budget. Moving on to the next item in the top left-hand corner of the chart, that particular chart depicts our budget forecast, and overall, when we combine our capital operating and debt service budgets, we are projecting to be $68 million favorable. The bulk of that consists of a favorable variance of about $62 million from our, that relates to our capital program. Our operating budget is projecting at this time to be $10.4 million favorable, and our debt service budget is projecting to be $4.8 million above budget. The reason for that budget over to debt services, you've heard a lot about the $640 million project or amount that we financed through the State Revolving Fund for the incinerator project. We had to pay cost of issuance expenses, which were not anticipated, but it was a really good return on our investment of $4 million to save, what, $400 million of a life debt bond, so I would take that every day. Moving to the next quadrant, the lower left-hand corner of the graph, it depicts our debt service coverage ratios. What this graph is depicting is that the district is exceeding the debt service ratios that are required for our bond covenant, and also what we had placed in the rate commission proposal, as well as those that are part of our, our forecast. And finally, the left, the, I'm sorry, the lower right-hand graph depicts our total delinquency and average collection period. Our average collection period is pretty much remaining steady at about 58 days. That has been pretty consistent. Our goal is 45 days, as we've indicated before. We will not be able to reach that 45-day goal without having the ability to actually shut off water services. Are there any questions that I can answer about this particular document? Okay, thank you. I will turn over to Tim for the next agenda items.
All right, I've got three that shouldn't take too long. The first one is two resolutions for our municipal financial advisor. We use two firms, PFM and IPA, kind of a sub-relationship. IPA is a minority woman-owned business, they get about 25% of the fees. These two firms help us with financial planning, with market updates, definitely with debt issuance, and a number of projects, they, you know, help us provide financial assumptions when we go to the rate commission and, and that sort of thing. So we're at the end of the first three years of that contract, so now we have the option for two option years, so we're asking you to please approve the first of the option years on these contracts. The only budgeted cost we have is a $25,000 annual retainer. There are other fees are all based on debt issuance, and when we, when we issue debt, and that comes out of the debt proceeds. Any questions on the municipal advisors? Next one is an investment advisory resolution, so we use US Bank Asset Management for investment advisory in actually executing our investments. So we position cash every day, we let them know how much cash we have, and then talk to them about, you know, how much we want to invest and how far out we want to go. So they've been doing that for four years, based on an RFP that they won a few years ago. There's one year left on that contract, renewal year, so I'm asking you to please approve the additional option year on their contract. They get paid a few basis points on the amount outstanding, it's roughly $200,000 a year. About for about a $600 million portfolio. Any questions on that one? All right, last one, we'll actually look at the investment portfolio, the operating fund portfolios. This is the sheet we look at every month. There have been some swings this month, so I'm going to start in the upper-left, power amount's about 14 million more. So we received a number, a fair amount of bond proceeds this month exceeded the amount that went out, so we proposed at about 605 million. Yield to maturity for our portfolios up slightly, a little bit over four, a four basis points. The benchmark actually jumped quite a bit again, so if you remember, the Fed cut rates in September, you saw an immediate drop in rates all across the curve. We've actually seen rates start to go up again since then, and the shorter-term rates are actually higher than they were a little bit ago, right, since right before the, the cut, so, although they have come down in the last handful of days, so we'll see what it looks like at the end of the month, but the benchmark, which is all one-to-three-year treasuries, is 4.3. Again, that portfolio turns over entirely every month, so the whole portfolio moves. Our portfolio only moves as we have things mature and as we put new investments in, so ours always moves more slowly than, than the benchmark. Our weighted average maturity jumped up about almost a quarter of a year. We actually put out, with all these bond proceeds that we received in the last month, we put some of those out, you know, two years or even a little bit more than two years to mature when, to coincide with future debt payments being, being due, so that increased our weighted average maturity to a little bit over one year. Benchmark's usually closer to two years, because it is one-to-three-year maturities. So we'll do that occasionally as we have excess funds and as we talk to US Bank and look at where the curve is. So those investments that are two, two-and-a-half years out range anywhere from probably 4.1% to 4.5%, depending on when we did them, so above our current yield and roughly around where the, where the benchmark is. Sector allocation, this is just what we look at to monitor whether or not we're, we're in compliance with our policy, and we are. We saw, again, a few swings, higher amounts on the treasury bond notes, that's because when we go out farther, that's usually treasury bonds, and we did push some of the portfolio out farther this month, and so that came at the expense of the amounts we had in commercial paper and the federal agency bonds. Those dropped each about four, four, four points versus an eight-point increase for the amount in the treasury bonds, but those are all in compliance with policy. Fund summary at the bottom left, there's really nothing much to add here. The big change that we saw in the yield of maturities mostly in the operating asset group, which is in the bottom, the bottom line there, and then the yield of maturities all stayed roughly the same, just moved a few basis points. Maturity distribution, we saw almost a 10-point drop in the zero-to-one years for our portfolio, which is the blue bar, the big blue bar in that bottom right box, and that is mostly offset by a 10-point increase in the two-to-three years. So like I said, we moved some of our portfolio out in that two-to-three-year range, that's reflected in those bars. The red bars, which is the benchmark, always have more in that one-to-two and two-to-three years, because that is, that is the benchmark. They saw a little bit of shifts there, they actually went, the benchmark actually saw about a four basis point increase in less than a year, which is actually outside the benchmark, but they, that's where we are seeing higher rates on the curve right now, so they put a little bit more there, at about two bases, two, I'm sorry, two-point drops in the one-to-two and the two-to-three years, so. That is what's going on in the investment portfolio. We see rates kind of jumping around right now as everyone's trying to figure out what the implication of potential policy changes will be with the new administration, so we'll probably see things just be volatile for, for, for a little bit. Any questions on the operating fund portfolio? If not, Trustee Wilson, there's no further business for the finance meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Snow, that concludes the business today. If anyone has any comments for the good of the body, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. The next meeting, by the way, is scheduled for the 21st, 31st of December, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Stakeholder Relations Committee meeting, Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District. The, I have no comments, but we do need a roll call, sorry.
That's okay. Yes, we will note again that the Trustees Wilson, Watson and Wabi are present in the room, and Trustees Nickazison and Kistner are present online.
Okay, thank you. First order of business, Counselor, how are you today?
I'm good, thank you.
You have the floor.
Trustee Wilson. Good morning, trustees. I'm here this morning to present to you a resolution to renew and extend the district's contract with Thomas McGee Group. Thomas McGee administers our Liability Claims Administration, Workers' Comp Claims Administration, and Water Backup Claims Administration. They have provided these services to the district for years. They were awarded a new contract last year after a bid process. That contract has four one-year extensions, and this resolution will authorize the first of the four renewal extensions. Are there any questions? If not, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I missed an item, and that's approval of the November fifth committee minutes meeting.
So moved.
Second. Minutes are approved. Next item is a discussion, Ms. Tracy Coleman. How are you today, Ms. Coleman?
I'm doing really well. How are you doing, trustee?
Fine, thank you.
Good morning, trustees. I'd like to bring your attention to an ordinance that I have for introduction and adoption is for the Classification Ordinance. Ordinance number one-six-five-two-seven. This is to add three additional job title changes to the ordinance. One, two being in Human Resources, an instructional designer, two, grade five, and an instructional designer, senior, grade C-six. The next is for operations, for a safety manager. That position is going to be a C-nine, and that would be a new position added to Operations Department. Trustees, do you have any questions or concerns about these new job titles? Okay, well, thank you very much for your time.
That appears to make this the record shortest meeting this year of the Stakeholder Relations. So I won't ask for any comments to keep it short.
Well, you can always rely on us for that.
There are no comments. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, thank you. The next tentative meeting date is thirty-first of December, 2024. Have a great rest of the month, folks, and the pleasure of my life.